Good evening, folks. Thanks for coming out. It is February 10th, 7:00 PM here for our regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Jimmy Clanton.
Here.
Councilmember Rob Turner.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jasmine Cobble. Councilmember George Turner.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tammy Grimes.
Here.
Mayor Jason Larry.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Councilman Registered Minister invocation, I think it is on you today. All right.
Thank you.
All right, folks, if everybody stand, please.
Let us pray, Father. We honor you as the great, truly living God, the God all by yourself. We thank you always for the opportunity to serve you by serving others. We thank you for your presence here tonight, that you will be pleased, that you will move mightily, that you'll open doors and you will make ways. We thank you, Lord, for us being servant leaders, that we are the people's people. And, Lord, we honor you tonight as we serve you in the calling that you've given us. So we ask that you be pleased in our service and our work and our calling, and that we commit all things unto you, that you might be glorified in all that we do. So we honor and bless you tonight, Father, and we give you all the glory and the praise, and we thank you for it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. All right, folks, we're going to move for the approval of the council, council agenda. We're going to add, oh, you know what? Councilman George Turner. For the Flat Rock, okay.
It's Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move that we add an item to the agenda.
Okay.
Please, a second.
You gotta say what the item is.
You have to make a motion to add an item. You have to accept adding an item.
Usually, I think we just approve the agenda with the addition of...
Right.
Okay.
Isn't that how we did it last time?
Hope we didn't get challenged. Okay.
Okay.
Move to add an agenda to the item. Flat Rock Development Plan Approval.
Okay. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good. All right. Also, as far as our agenda is concerned with the consent agenda, I see we have a change. There is no staff appointments on the consent agenda. Are they taking a break, or what is happening here?
Right. Yes.
All right.
I couldn't really hear George Turner, Mr. Councilmember George Turner, clearly, but he said he had to leave.
Really?
And I couldn't hear what Ms. Grimes said either.
All right.
Not sure.
So I guess we'll be having an informational meeting today. Excuse me one second.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. So, folks, we will continue to have our city council meeting. We just won't take any votes, which is fine.
Madam Clerk, I'll need to leave.
No worries. Uh, let's see here. Ms. Iris Settles, are you here? Yep. As again, folks, we're gonna continue with our city council meeting. I don't care if it was just me and Jimmy. Let's see, where, did I see, did I see Ms. Settle? What's her? Okay, no worries. But this is what we are going to do. We're gonna continue our council meeting with, Ms. Settles, I need you for a second. Thank you, sir. No worries. So what we'll do, we'll go into presentation. And we will start with Mr. Larry Walker. Mr. Walker. There he is, Mr. Walker. He come forward, please.
Oh, my goodness. Mr. Mayor and Mr. Clanton, representing the City of Stonecrest, I am honored to accept this proclamation. I'm very pleased to be here, especially on the night when all that rain decided to fall. At least it wasn't snow. But I am very much, I do very much appreciate the proclamation. And I wanna take a moment to shout out to my wife of 62 years. She's been, she's been hanging around and helping me with my artwork for a number of years now. And I have lots of friends who are here in the audience. There are at least two other artists in the Stonecrest area that you should know about. One of them is Mr. Michael Schofield, who's in the audience. Wanna wave, Michael? The other audience, the other artist in the area is Yannick Norman, who also lives in Stonecrest. Both of them are making their mark in the art world and making their mark for Stonecrest. So keep in touch with them, sir. All right. And I do thank you very much again.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. Palmer. Come forward, please, sir. Will you be, in your laptop? You hooking up?
Yes.
You wanna read? All right. You're doing this for us, or we...
That's them.
Excellent. All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would, with the clerk's permission, I would love to be able to excuse the council members who decided not to be here today, but in that we don't have a quorum, we're not able to excuse them. So... It's not funny.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor and council, council member and honored guest. As you know, the City of Stonecrest Parks and Recreation Department is going through the process of master planning. And during that process, we sat with our team and our consultants, and we made a conscious decision to strategically engage not only the community at large, but specifically the youth. And when we did that, we went ahead and we started partnering and engaging with all the elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. Well, two high schools and their SGA, which is their student government associations within their high schools, stood out. They took the torch of this community engagement effort, and they went ahead and ran with it, and they did an amazing job. So what I would say tonight is going to be something that people should not miss out, which is anti-America media of our students and our children in our community. Because you're gonna see the opposite that is generally portrayed of our students and our community, our youth of our community. You're gonna see the opposite. You're gonna see well-educated young people that are gonna come here and show you how they took initiative, and they strategized on it, and then they went ahead and executed, and then they have results, and they computed that results, and now they're gonna present it to you. So you're gonna see a well-rounded student and a student body coming before you. And I just wanna say, this is an evening and a presentation that we should highlight as a community, because our youth are outstanding. So we're gonna start with La Thonia High School, and I'm gonna allow them to come up, introduce themselves, and also their educator that's attached to their program at the school, and then go through their PowerPoint and then give you what they, you know, how they engaged in this project, okay?
Excellent.
So La Thonia High School first.
Sean.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you know me, I'm Madison Hampton.
All right.
See you all again. So thank you again for having us. On behalf of La Thonia High School and La Thonia High School's SGA, so I'll get straight to the point. On January 14th, La Thonia High School's SGA president and members hosted a school-wide student survey for the Stonecrest Parks and Recreation Department with the intention of understanding the concerns and desires of the youth in Stonecrest. With over 500 responses from our school, we were able to consider things such as wellness and mental health and its importance to our students. We present this information to you tonight with intentions that you consider the desires and concerns of the youth in Stonecrest. Not only will your decision impact our community today, but it will also affect the way that citizens interact with Stonecrest in the future. Let's move on to the first slide. As it shows, there are many students who are aware that they live in the new City of Stonecrest. And there are few who aren't sure. However, it is likely that many of the students who said no aren't sure that they live in the City of Stonecrest. I apologize.
Oh, it's all good stuff.
For our next slide, we see that most of the participants of the survey have lived in this area for over 10 years, which means that they were able to match the Girl of the Sun, watch the Girl of the Sun, Chris, I apologize. However, 50% of the participants have lived here for less than five years, which means that they may not be aware of the changes in our community and may not also be aware of the many locations that are in our community. This slide is just providing you with the statistics of participating schools, in which there were over six. As it was previously mentioned, there were elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. And this slide is just providing you with statistics of participants' grade levels, and the majority of the participants were high school students. It can be concluded that the Parks and Recreation Department was seeking responses from young people who thought more maturely. And as you can see, many of the participants have not been to Stonecrest amenities within the last 12 months. And our next few slides will give you insight on why and how you can improve our amenities.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Clanton, my name is Zay Brewer, and I'm rising as the 11th grade president at La Thonia High School of SGA. And now I'm gonna show you just some data of what we got of these, of the survey that we got a lot of responses because of cookies, but... So, we're just gonna... So, if you look at, if you look at, would you participate in special events, festivals put on by the Stonecrest Parks and Recreation Department, you see that 50% say that they would, but it depends on the event. So you're really gonna have to get, if you want the youth to get involved, we need to find events that will attract them, so to speak. And 27% said they would go to any event. 15% said not sure, and 8% said they would not participate whatsoever. So, these are the programs in which, I mean, these are the programs in which the survey was asking, which, which program would you want in, in the City of Stonecrest and the Parks and Master Parks and Recreation Master Plan? And the majority believe that there's a need for fitness programs and youth sports recreational leagues. So like, maybe an example would be like a YMCA league. Or they would like community events and creative dancing and arts performing programs. So you see, just under 40% say that we need fitness programs. What facilities would you like to see added or improved in Stonecrest in the next five to 10 years? See here, the majority say basketball courts. Of course, also aquatic centers, such as swimming, it gets hot in the summer. Outdoor adventure parks, indoor athletic fields, and playgrounds. So then here comes, how concerned are you about the safety of these parks? And you can see that over 70% say that they're concerned in some way about their safety in these parks. So, of course, you know, adequate, you know, surveillance, maybe some security, you know? So, you look at this, 38% say very concerned. 22% say concerned. 19% say somewhat concerned. 10.9% say not concerned at all. And then 9% say no opinion. So that was the data that we got. We got almost 600 students to, in our school, to respond. And that's it for us, and thank you for having us.
High school. Unbelievable. All right.
Next up, we're gonna have Arabian Mountain High School. And I'm gonna, again, have their students come up and then recognize themselves, introduce themselves and recognize their educator.
Excellent. Excellent.
Hold up, hold up. There's more than three. So all the ones, everybody that came out to support them from Arabian Mountain High School, can you stand up so the mayor and council can see all these beautiful youngsters?
Good evening to the honorable Mr. Jason Larry, Mayor, City of Stonecrest, and the elected council members that are here. Mr. Jimmy Clanton. The constituents of City of Stonecrest, family and friends. On behalf of Arabia Mountain High School, where Dr. Rodney F. Swanson is principal and the Student Government Association of Arabia, we greet you and thank you for this opportunity to present survey results in the data student government collected for Stonecrest Parks and Recreation. My name is Samaria Robinson, and presenting with me today is Ariel Sanford and Britt Gates. When we were asked to complete this project, there were numerous questions that came to mind, given the fact that Arabia is not a community school. However, we did not let our uniqueness impede our ability to ask what they would like to see new and changed in the City of Stonecrest. Our team created QR codes and went throughout our school to ask students and faculty what additions they would like to see in our parks. So further ado, we have Ariel Sanford with our findings.
608 students at Arabia Mountain High School completed the survey. Out of those 600, 400 completed, 400 live in the city limits of Stonecrest. More than half of the students at Arabia Mountain High School have lived in the Stonecrest area for more than 10 years. Majority of the students that took the survey were freshmen, followed by sophomores, juniors, and seniors. We would, most of our students visit Brownsmoove Park. The other 235 have not visited any parks or recreations in the area. Majority of the students would love to see fitness and wellness programs, followed by soccer, youth sports leagues, volunteer programs, swim lessons, outdoor recreations, alternative sports, and dance and performing. We would love to see aquatic facilities, followed by indoor recreations, indoor athletics, and basketball courts. Majority of our students are very concerned about our crime and adequate lighting in our parks. In conclusion, this project was very important to the Student Government Association of Arabia Mountain High School because the survey was asking for feedback from us, the youth, and what we would like to see added or improved in our parks. We are absolutely honored that the City of Stonecrest is seriously interested in the ideas and interests of its youth. Again, we thank you, Mr. Mayor and our elected official, for allowing us to be a part of this great opportunity. We look forward to seeing the improvements in the Parks and Recreation facilities in the City of Stonecrest. This opportunity was indeed an honor we will value forever. Thank you for your time and consideration. Good evening.
So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the presentations for tonight. But if you did notice, our youth came out with over 1,300 surveys completed, the most of any of our surveys in the City of Stonecrest so far. So our youth are extremely engaged, and they are, they have spoken, and we're gonna try and fulfill, from our side, their requests the best we can. Prior to ending tonight, there is a member of our team here at City of Stonecrest, Ms. Tamika Porter, who's in charge of our programming. She's our program manager, and she is one of the main drivers of this initiative. And I just wanna recognize her.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent. Excellent. Of any of you all that presented, is anyone over 18? Oh, I thought it was gonna pick me four new ones right now. But that's all right. That's all right. We're gonna let this one wait for a second.
Mr. Bell pointed out, could we get a photo with them?
Oh, for sure, right now.
Here, and we're about to feed them, so we...
Oh, good, 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 good. Let's do it. We're in the way of food. There you go, there we go.
Can we get the faculty that supports them as well?
That's right. You need to be in the front there.
Y'all need to get me a step stool. Oh yeah, they definitely taller than me. But that's the same thing in kindergarten class when we went into that school.
Got it there, got it there?
Thank you, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
This is where I excel. Let's give the young people another round of applause. Alright folks, we're gonna continue our program. Alright, so, um, something I want to tell you, um, and then we'll, we'll, we'll do a deep dive in a minute. One is that, um, there is no city hall without people. Period. There is, the folks are unbelievable, unbelievable. Uh, and I, and, and, and days like today, and when we're gonna do a deep dive on days like today, is that I am glad, I am a strong mayor, former government, city manager, that the staff works for me. See, the city is gonna keep going this evening. You know, giant way as a matter of fact. Um, and some folks that, uh, to make this even better, um, I'm announcing my staff promotions today, uh, but they already know that they've been, uh, they've been promoted. But I wanted you all to know, as a general public, why they're being promoted, what is happening. Oh, uh, newsflash, don't need a vote. So, the first person I want to start with is Mr. Chris Wheeler. Come on, Mr. Wheeler. That's my man. We're gonna line them all up here and we're gonna do something special. Now, this is what's special about Chris Wheeler. So, uh, some years ago when I first u- uh, met him, uh, he was our city planner. Uh, footnote, as a matter of fact, all of our employees come from, uh, Jacob C H two M. And they have best-in-class folks. Uh, so this is why none of this really surprised me. But, but this was a separate situation because Chris was working like you will not believe. And his adeptness at city planning and, uh, uh, mapping and, and codes, just uncanny. Then he had the opportunity, and this is why I knew I had a high-character individual. We had a person we had to replace. And I told Chris, I said, "Look, um, I'm gonna make you interim, uh, director of planning, because we're gonna bust up this community development piece because it was too big. It was too many people reporting to it and it got all sideways." So it's just planning and zoning, which is the cornerstone of Stonecrest. Of those three services, we get nothing without planning and zoning. I said, "Chris, not gonna be able to pay you. Uh, but you're gonna have to do the work, and then we'll just go from there." He didn't blink, not in front of me, anyway. So, I'm giving this story because this is really important. He worked like he was, that he had all the money. And unbeknownst to me, he was working another job, still coming here, new baby on the way, doing his thing. Pless John comes to him and says, "You really need to take a real close look at this, this young man, about his skill level, what he can do, and what needs to happen from there." So we test him. He's doing every planning and zoning meeting. Uh, as a matter of fact, if you, if you ever been to any of them, he's it. So with that, in a very short period of time, thirty days, forty-five days, sixty maybe? The baby was coming, he was going crazy, the world was spinning around. I said, "That's our interim planning and zoning, uh, director, and now he's our permanent planning and zoning director. How about that?" My man. So, you stand over there. We got something for everybody, got something for everybody. But I wanted to tell that special story first, because folks, we grow our own in Stonecrest. I don't have to go to New Jersey or Florida or anywhere, uh, to find exactly the talent that we have that's majority African-American, right here in our own city. Uh, even though Sean was important, but he's my dude. It's good. Now, the next person moves from, um, uh, her post and position, Tiana Daniels. Come on, Ms. Daniels, come on down. There she is. Very, very serious, uh, very pleasant, smart, young lady. So, uh, now, if you wanna test your metal, work the front desk at the city of Stonecrest. Because people come in with their businesses, their licenses, they're mad because the cap county sent them back over here. You wanna test your skill? I got something for you. And, um, she worked it magically, she started that, but then I found out she had planning experience. So now, guess who our city planner is? There she is, promoted, Ms. Tiana Daniels. Now we have another person. This is serious here too, it's all serious. This, this gotta be the nicest lady I have ever met, including my wife, of course. Uh, and once again, did two or three things at the same time. Business licenses, waiting on folks, uh, being able to get things together on that end of it, had almost twenty years' experience in another agency. Once again, working every day, watching them, observing them for myself, to be able to say, "That's another key member that we're promoting today." Ms. Sonia Isom is now our deputy city clerk. Come on, Ms. Sonia, there she is. I should've called you up first. Okay, there we go. There we are, okay. It's like we're going by height right now. I started off with Chris. Okay, and thank you all for this, so this is, this makes my year. Uh, and it makes my year because we're promoting within. We're giving these people a chance to make their living in Stonecrest, share their talents, and do whatever they want for the future. And then you just, you just, as, as, and as an executive, you just can't get any better than that. It, uh, uh, it just really warms my heart. Um, the next person, oh, this is so good. Come on up, Mr. Franklin, come on up, come on up, Mr. Franklin, Al Franklin, here he is, come on. I have known Mr. Franklin longest. He has been with me in more battles than he would care to mention. He gets to tote the shield, throw the rocks. Just unbelievable. We started, uh, Mr. Franklin has been a three-time councilman in the city of Lithonia, that's where I met him at, some years, a decade ago as a matter of fact. And, um, uh, from there, he came over as our cultural and community affairs manager. Then we promoted him to a director, because now he has his own department. Now, he is senior director, because he is now taking on international, and he's taking on corporate giving and sponsorships. So, once again, three-time champion, we call him the king in the office, senior director, uh, Mr. Al Franklin. So, so with this, folks, it's, it's a huge job, it's a huge job, because you have to, uh, be here with us every day to see how many international folks wanna come here and do business in our industrial park area, in our commercial area. And we've garnered a reputation of being business-friendly, being able to get things done, uh, and get things done expediently. Alright, here's the next one. One of our biggest markets that have come up at this standpoint is our film market. And, um, we toil and stroll over this and, and, uh, had to have an executive, had to have an executive that knew what that person was doing. This person had to know the market, they had to know the people, um, uh, and created the department for us to be able to make that happen. And, um, I have known of this person for three decades. And I've seen the quality of work that she has delivered. Now we have brought her on board full-time, and she is creating and has created the office, the mayor's office of film and entertainment, and that is Ms. Lirana Sutton. Ms. Sutton, let's come to her. Come on down. Exactly. We run out of space, we run out of space. There we go. There we go, almost there, folks, almost there. Uh, these next two. You gotta love these guys. So, um, um, this starts with a, a gentleman that I met some time ago. Uh, Pless John and I was having breakfast, he called us up and said, uh, you know, could you, could you, could he have breakfast with us? And this was, uh, you know, several years ago, and we had an opportunity to talk to him, and we both looked at each other and said, "This is one smart brother. We gotta do something with him sooner or later." Then sooner or later came. And then we had an opportunity, um, um, to get this opening and make things happen with regards to, uh, where we are in this standpoint. Uh, I'm gonna call one-half of the bigs, and that is Mr. Clarence Boone. Yeah, you're gonna have to stand on that side once you get over here. Now, we call them one-half of the bigs, because, you know, they got a little size to them, you'll see the other one in a second. But it's this, we moved from, uh, Clarence Boone from being director of economic development to senior director of economic development, because now he takes on tourism and everything else that we were paying other people to do, that we have now in-house, that we focus on, um, uh, with this area. He brings thirty years of sales and marketing and, and, and all kind of stuff. And sometimes they just come to me with the stuff they have on the day, and I just say, "You gotta be lying, you just gotta, you have to be lying." The joke, so now you'll see why, uh, he's one-half of the bigs for our senior director. The next person moves from manager of business development to director of business development, and Mr. Will Sells. Alright. Yeah, he is. Yeah, yeah. There are a few times I stand in a room with Pless, Will, Clarence, and I'm the smallest cat that's standing there. I said, "What is going on here?" So, yes, Sean, I know how you feel now, I know how you feel. And the reason, you know, uh, so what happens is, you know, uh, uh, gosh, you know, Mr. Sells has forty years in education, business development, he's been a dean before at Marsh Brown, all the business that folks are calling, there's only one guy that we go to, and that's him. And he also knows, uh, film also. So, um, he moved from, um, just being an individual contributor to now has his own department in business development. And, uh, affectionately, you know you're popular when you have a nickname in city hall, so, uh, these are the bigs. So we go, we call them the bigs because they're big and they get big deals. So we love that. Last but not least, uh, and this is gonna be a process that's happening, um, let's congratulate our clerk, Ms. Megan Reed, who is the first city employee. There she is. It's lying next to the bigs. I love this. So where, where we're going, folks, is that, um, uh, we love Jacobs, and we have a contract with him, a great partnership with him. Um, but now we're starting to sort of take the training wheels off, and we have to, um, start with our own set of employees one day. And, uh, I'm so, so proud of the work that, uh, Ms. Reed, uh, conducts here. Honest, loyal, thorough, everything that you can name, she has the full package. And, um, uh, we're just so proud, you know, proud to have you, Megan. Now we have a special surprise. Uh, First Lady, if you would join me, please. There you go. I know you all are saying, "Oh, Lord have mercy." So, uh, uh, hold, hold on one second. She's gonna medal all of our, uh, champions today. I told you, you were getting a medal. Some of you are gonna have to bend down.
Alright, um, Ms. Sells, do you have that, uh, those copies I asked you about?
So, um, I think we owe it to you this evening for an explanation. Um, why is it just Councilman Clinton and the mayor? Why is it just Councilman Clayton and the mayor? There were six before and now there's two. I wish the high schoolers could still be in here so that we could, uh, actually have a real adult conversation. But that's okay. Um, uh, it's, it's quite all right. Folks, here's, here's, here's the thing, here's the thing you can't do. Doesn't go your way, it doesn't go your way. You can't run like you four. This, this is not what a city is built on. And I'm gonna tell you why this is. It's a sensitive subject, but that's okay. We're all adults and you all need to know, you know, what is happening here. Um, um, the long and the short of it, I'm gonna allow them to, uh, you know, pass out, uh, what we have today. And then we're gonna talk about it and then you're gonna be informed directly so you won't have to hear it in the potshots. You, some, you don't have to say, well, I heard. No, I was there when the mayor said it. Give you two seconds to get them in your hands and then we'll go from there. And if you have, um, um, extra copies, um, Ms. Angela and Ms. Siddle, uh, let me have one to reference also with, uh, staff and, uh, Councilman Clayton. Oh, lovely. Any extra? Okay. So, pretty much what we're doing today, folks, is saving you time and energy for open record requests. We're just gonna give it to you. Exactly. Cause I know Dave Marks will be, I need an open record request for it. Now, we're gonna do it right now. Oh, did you get one, Council? The, uh, the chart, get the chart also? Okay. Uh, do we have, uh, got one chart left? Okay, good, good, good. All right. So, folks, uh, what you have here today, um, and I'm gonna tell this story because I'm, I'm the one that affected and, and then tell you why it is today. So, many of you were here, um, September seventeenth, um, two thousand eighteen, uh, where I, I announced that I had cancer. Okay? And, um, um, I had been taking pre-treatment prior to that, but it just got to be a lot for me. So, I made the announcement, folks, you know, I wanna take a few days. I wanna, you know, take some time, we all need some time. Um, and so, uh, I was requesting that, you know, just give me a few days, just give me a few days. And, um, specifically after that, what should have happened at that time, um, somebody should have made a motion to be able to, you know, just let me off for a couple of days. Because in our charter, it says you must give notification if you wanna be off. It's right there, black and white, very easy, sixth grader could do it. Uh, matter of fact, the Academy of Scholars, uh, I let a sixth grader read it and said, tell me what you think this means. Told me exactly what it means. But, you know, we have difference of opinion. That's why there's a hundred and fifty-nine courtrooms in the state of Georgia. They come, different interpretations. So, what you see here is that you have a letter from our city attorney, Tom Curry, and also ours then clerk, Ms. James, Ms. Brenda James, sending to council, you all have to excuse this man so that he could be off. Okay? Y'all follow me so far? So, everybody knows about this, all council members know about it, everything. And I, I didn't wanna share this story with you this way, but see, now I don't have a choice. Only person, the only person that would excuse me was Councilman Jimmy Clayton. I got emails like, well, should we pay him? If he's off, is, you know, how long does it take before he's out of office? It was, it was nothing about with regards to, you know, what my plight was, what my wife's plight is at this point. Because there, there it is, black and white. So, you know what I had to do? Couldn't get them to send it in, couldn't get them to vote on it because I can't come up here on the dais and make my own excuse, my, excuse myself from the meetings. I even asked them, just sent a note in. Only person would do it was Jimmy. But I forgave that, I was fine with it. But let me tell you what my day was like, if you all don't mind. I'm on a steel table. Anybody ever had prostate cancer? And, 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 you know, the hospital always raise your hand, but I'm gonna tell you what it's like. Yeah, with my man. Go in, depending upon your situation. You see this thing here? It's going in you. It's going in you. And you gotta drink a super gallon of water, this is for thirty-three, thirty-five days in a row. And, um, uh, even there were some funny parts of it because Adrian was with me, living through this with me, and there was another guy named Larry there that I was telling my wife about, who heckled me every day and he was seventy-something years old and he was made out of steel. He said, you, you won't make it through these first two, you watch. I said, let's see. First five I didn't make it through, I had to go change clothes, I had to do all kind of stuff. And it, 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 it's, it's, it's that photon radiation will have your bladder and everything else boiling. It is painful. And then from there, you get off of that steel table, you roll down your windows and you come to city hall and go to work because they won't let you off. And they knew if I had missed two meetings out of such, I would be disqualified as mayor. Okay, I still took that in. Now here we are, year or so later. This is why they left, I'm going up to managing for this. Karma is an interesting animal. This is how God set stuff up. Now all of a sudden, Ms. Kabul has missed more than the days allowed with regards to what happens in the charter. So, how does this come about? Well, there are some citizens that were here during our budget hearing while she wasn't here. If you miss two days out of six days, and specifically language says in the charter, if you miss one-third of the regular meetings in a three-month period of time, you have defaulted on your seat. She missed not only two meetings, she missed all the special call meetings. Five meetings in a three-month period of time. But those other three doesn't count, what counts is the two. So, what was transpiring today after a couple of citizens sent in, I wanna see everybody's attendance from last year. This is how it came up. So, those that sit up here and say, well, you know, I'm for the charter, I'm gonna stick by the charter, then stick by the charter this time. So, here's where we stand. We had to determine whether or not, and we wanted to do this with decency and in order. Because it does not benefit us community-wise to embarrass folks. Met with them two-on-two, make sure we weren't breaking any laws, sunshine laws, to make sure that they know this is the infraction that was going on at this particular point. We have to find the way of handling it so that if there's a difference of opinion between citizens and attorneys, we will have one solid opinion and it would come from Superior Court. Made it private, you know? Oh, no, 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 no. They called for a special call meeting, which was today at four-thirty. Now, the other chart that you have is the attendance of everybody from last year. I missed a day, one day. Rob missed a day. She missed more than a lot of days with regards to where the charter is. So, do you sweep that under the rug? Because this, you're gonna turn right back around and it's gonna be the mayor's fault. Today's gonna be the mayor's fault. But I'm okay with that because I am following the law. So, what happens at four-thirty, they came in, just called a special call meeting and said that we're gonna vote to retroactively excuse her. Uh, no. And it took just absolute crazy wrangling. And the city attorney told them six times, can't do it, can't do it, can't do it. But they were persistent, 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 they were gonna make this happen. Well, here's where the problem came in. Okay, we're gonna take this vote. You councilwoman, Kabul, can't vote. Because it's about you. This is conflict, you can't, you can't vote. You councilwoman, Tammy Grimes, you were not even elected, you can't vote. So, now it's four people voting, correct? Two up, two down, fails. Ooh wee. So, uh, in between that, I don't know what their diabolical plan was, but we had workshop, we went from there. And the thing about it is this, folks, we got to have a declaring information with regards to if she's, if she's, uh, uh, forfeited her seat or not. We can argue about it all day long, but let me give you a very specific example. They didn't have that vigor with Diane O'Doma. Called the police on Diane. Well, not called the police on her, put restraining order on her. All right? Because by operation of law, Diane O'Doma forfeited her seat automatically when she qualified to run. Does that make sense? When you miss your allotted days, you automatically forfeit your seat. I don't care who's trying to save you. And that's where this is today. So, the reason I wanted to tell you all direct, up close and in personal is because it's not personal. Not, you know, not for me. Because if you all have ever noticed me through the years with regards to having meetings, I try to be as nice and even to everybody as you can. I never hold it, you know, I held a, a judgment or a grudge against them with regards to, how do you not let a person off with cancer? It doesn't matter if it's Jason Larry or not. How do you not vote for that? How do you not do that? Then you turn around and somebody else is busy and they can't make it and you're gonna retroactively vote for them to be off? Oh, hell no. That's not how this gonna roll. No, no, I'm gonna see you at the Cal Superior Court is where I'm gonna see you. It's ridiculous. So, that's why I'm beside myself with this. So, since that trick didn't work, how about we just embarrass them in front of everybody? We'll just get up and leave. Bounce then, because business still got handled today, didn't it? Exactly. And it's gonna keep getting handled. Childish nonsense, ridiculous. It can't be my way, Ms. Val, so I'm gonna leave. Gone leave. Stonecrest will still be here. You all elected me to carry out the duties of this city. And I'm gonna do it whether they like it or not. That's where we are. So, Ms. Val, we not gonna run home, crawl on the table, start crying, oh, Lord, they left me. It's just me and Jimmy. Me and Jimmy can do it. Don't come back then if that's how you feel. Then we'll get some more folks. This is how electorate works. This isn't Donald Trump, Georgia, this isn't that kind of environment. You're gonna, just, just scheme and scam and make sure something happens. And that, no, no, I'm gonna put you on Front Street, right out here with everybody else. That's where this is, that's why you have an electorate. That's why you elect people in the office. I'm just disappointed they drug Tammy Grimes in with them. You just got here, you don't even know what's going on. Ms. Grimes asked us, if you didn't make the four-thirty meeting, she said, who's responsible for us not taking the vote? The people that's sitting up here. We're responsible. You're the responsible party. The first person that's responsible is Kabul, come to the meetings. And if you can't make the meetings, do what the charter says. Give definition with regards to why you on here and then get approved for not being here. Don't have them come back in here three, four months later, you know, trying to protect their interest with regards to, well, we can't let her go. It's none, nothing about us. You let yourself go. You did this to yourself. So, when everybody comes to me and say, it's that evil Jason Larry, that mayor. It's not, it's not. So, if you're not here to defend yourself because you decided to run and hide, that's your business. So, this is my story and I'm sticking to it. And you have the paper to prove it, all right? So, either way, we're gonna find out if this young lady is into faulting her chair. Either way, if she is, goodbye. If she's not, she'll be sitting up here. But to whatever this was today, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it. It's because you all are the one to have the say. I apologize in advance for not being able to handle the other business because you have to have a quorum. I don't know what they was thinking, leaving me with the microphone. Can't tell you, Joel, what was on their mind because they had to know. We wasn't leaving here today without me telling y'all where this is. All right? Call this meeting to adjournment. Can I get a second, Jimmy?
Mr. Mayor, hey, turn on the mic, there you go. Mr. Mayor, I, I would like the second of me, uh, the adjournment.
As a matter of fact, I apologize, Councilman. Let me let you have your say, cause I was up here just yammering.
No, sir, no, sir, um, that, that's quite fine. You know, the, the thing that I wanna say to the audience is that I appreciate you all sticking around for your city. Um, this is your city. So, you have every right to know and have insights on what's going on in your city. And you elect us to represent you in your city, in your district, and you expect us to be here to do just that. Regardless of how we feel about me or the mayor or anybody else, we can't, you know, uh, be derelict of our duties and not show up simply because we don't agree. That is exactly the reason you do show up, so you can voice your disagreement. And that's why you have not one, not two, not three, but six people on city council who get to vote on each and every one of these things. Now, what we cannot do, we cannot on the fly change the charter to suit ourselves and our self-interest. We just can't, we're not gonna be able to do that ever. So, I'm not ever gonna be in favor of that. Uh, you know, I stand on what I stand on, you know, uh, you know, I support the city of Stonecrest one hundred thousand percent and the people that are in this great city. And so, if I don't feel that I can no longer represent you guys in the right, proper legal manner, then I would just simply resign. I, you know, there's this thing they call suicide by police. You know, it's like, you know, you running in front of a cop and you waving a weapon so you know he's gonna get, shoot at you. I'm not gonna commit suicide by police by being derelict of my duties and say, you know, um, you know, I would just quit, I would just tell you. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put it in somebody else's lap to fire me or to get rid of me or to do something that I don't supposed to do that would cause me to lose my seat on city council. Now, I would say this, I don't believe, know, most of the time, our council members do not want to not do what's right for the city of Stonecrest. But that is not an excuse for the times that you do do what's wrong for the city when you know better. And so, you know, I would say this though. In defense of the city of Stonecrest, everything was done to make certain that this never went public until we found that there was, you know, that there was actually a forfeiture of the seat. Nothing was ever brought out to public. There were at least two or three private meetings, uh, as the mayor say, with two councilmen per meeting to let, you know, uh, along with the city or along with an attorney that says, look, here's what's gonna happen, here's what we wanna do. We wanna go and find out, first of all, if there is a forfeiture. If there's no forfeiture, all is well, nothing else gets said. We just move along, nobody, we don't have to drag ourselves in front of the media. We don't have to open the story up to the input of the public. We can just handle this in-house. And too many times, and I'm gonna say this, and I hope you guys don't hold it against me, but too many time, black folks can't do that among ourselves. We talk about it, we act like that's what we wanna be, but when it comes down to it, we don't really follow through. We just don't do it. We are too ready to pick up rocks and throw it at each other instead of like sitting bikes and sitting down and resolving it like we got sense. Because we do, we have sense, so what's the problem? So, if you put a picture on the problem, then that might be the problem. So, if you say, it's okay when John don't do it, but it ain't okay when Jane don't do it, the only difference is the picture. So, let's remove the picture from the problems in our communities and deal directly with the issues and we can have this city that is a great, great city. We in a position where we can start anew. We got monies that would not have came to this area if we had not been a city. We got SPOSS funding, we got LMIC money, we got all kind of things that are in our, at our, um... We got SPOSS funding, we got LMEC money, we got all kind of things that are in our, at our, um, reach simply because we decided, we, all of you decided that we wanted a city, we voted for it. We did, the majority won, we are a city because the majority said so. Jason Larry is the ma- mayor of Stonecrest, why? Because the majority said so. So it would be just irresponsible of me as a city council person to believe that the mayor who has won by majority does not represent the people. I'm done.
If I can get the directors to come forward, please. The ones that are still here. And while they're coming up, I'll tell you what I'm doing. This is Black History Month. And so our theme, uh, is history makers past and present. We know that there are a lot of people who have made inroads and, and set our foundation for us over the past years. But we wanna recognize tonight, a person who is making history now. And it's positive history, regardless of what you may have seen or heard. And so, um, Sean DePalma, who is our, he black, he just don't. He knows now. But, but, um, Sean, this was Sean's idea. And so we wanna present this award to Mayor Jason Larry as being our first history maker.
Uh, uh, thank you, I appreciate it. But folks, there is one person, I want y'all to know, uh, other than, uh, First Lady, there is one person that keeps the glue together. It is Players Jana, folks. It is Players Jana. He is our, he is our leader. He's our office leader, he's our public safety, um, you know, pu- uh, public works director, chief operating officer. He's, 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 he's everything. And, uh, I, I just can't thank you enough, Players, for standing, you know, standing with us. And of course, you also, Ms. City Attorney. All right, y'all go, y'all go home, man, you about to make me start crying, I'm not making you start crying. Don't cry.